Welcome, everyone, to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of March 27, 2017. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of our chambers. The order of the business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under Public Hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating his or her name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker, and as a courtesy, an alarm will sound after four minutes. After testifying, please sign in on the pink sheet laying on either side of the podium next to the microphone. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under Third Reading. And on the second and last Mondays of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue, not on today's agenda nor planned for any future agenda. Courtesy and decorum are expected of all who come before this body. No one may approach city staff without permission from the council, and no applauding, booing, or other expression of support or opposition is allowed except through testimony. All cell phones should be turned off, and private conversation taken outside the chamber during the week. If you have questions regarding an agenda item, please feel free to get in touch with any member of the City Council. Will the clerk please call the first item?
Certainly. Our first item is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through 10.
Is anyone here wishing to testify on any of these items? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, Teresa?
All right. If not, we can act on these items. Items one and two were introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Moved by Roy, seconded by Jane. Discussion? Please call the roll. Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Four through eight were introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Cindy. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp. Motion carried, seven to zero. Next, then, are public hearing resolutions. Item 11 is accepting the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of March 1st through the 15th, 2017.
Would anyone like to come forward and talk about a claim? Seeing none, please call the next item.
All right. Next, then, is item 12, amending the fiscal year 2016-22 capital improvement program to change the funding source for the Lincoln Police Department CIP Project 0345, LPD Garage Maintenance and Repair Facility, to change the amount, funding sources, and appropriated funds in 2016-17.
Good afternoon. Jeff Blimeister with Lincoln Police Department. And thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to share a little bit of information about this resolution and try to answer any questions that you may have. Tonight, Pat Wenzel, the superintendent of the Police Garage, is here with me to share his expertise. In the 1930s, the current police garage was opened as an international harvester, sales, and service station. In 1973, LPD began using this building to service our police vehicles. In 92, LPD maintenance staff took on the work of the city's light vehicle fleet. Today, Pat and his crew service over 560 different pieces of equipment in a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week operation. In 2005, the best that our research can tell is when this was first placed, so the renovation or replacement of the police garage was placed in the CIP. It's about that same time period that it was placed in our strategic plan, and funding has continuously stopped the momentum to any of those endeavors. In 2015, a fleet maintenance study was completed, giving us an array of different options, from renovating at the current locale to a joint combined facility with the county engineer to a standalone building. And that's really what got placed. One of those options was placed into the CIP with funding to begin in 2021, 2022 with general obligation bonds. And that is the $17.9 million price tag that you see. Today, we are facing some very needed renovations, approaching approximately $600,000 in repairs. We also know from our discussions internally with David Carey and others that the South Hay Market redevelopment is quickly approaching upon our current location at 635 J. That combined with about five years' worth of savings because of low fuel prices in the police maintenance fund, the fleet maintenance fund, has a combination of opportunities. So Pat, who's very passionate about this, as he should be, did some research, and he found an existing 12,000-square-foot building on approximately 3.5 acres in an industrial complex just west of Salt Valley. This combined with the footprint of the South Hay Market has lent us towards moving our current fleet facilities eventually to this new location. We're proposing a two-phase process. The first phase would be the purchase and some immediate renovations to the new area, and those would be paid for with savings that Pat has already realized as part of fuel and additional revenue sources in his fleet maintenance fund and also LPD or the Lincoln Police Department reappropriated funds. The second phase, because that building is 12,000 square feet, our current location is about 23,000 square feet, would pay for the addition of approximately 17,000 square-foot addition to the new building contingent upon the sale of our current property. And of course, we're balancing all of these things with not adversely affecting our operations because we don't want to move too far from where we have our officers report, because with every minute that they're driving to report to lineup is another minute that they're not serving the citizens of Lincoln. Now, we need to make sure, so we have plans for environmental and floodplain studies to be completed at the new location to make sure it is capable of holding a 17,000-square-foot addition, which would be required for our operations to move out there eventually. Can I answer some questions for you?
When, thank you for being here, Chief. When will you know on whether or not the additional building space would be feasible out there?
We have to negotiate with the seller, the owner of the current location, for an appraisal, and then to have these studies completed, and the sale of the actual property would be contingent upon it being able to meet our needs. So we're hopeful, hopeful, that that can be completed in 90 days.
Thank you.
Yep.
John?
Yes, Chief. Appreciate your presenting.
Thank you for presenting this. Had a couple of questions on the funding of it, and I know when we had some disbriefings earlier, you talked about the police cars that you'd like to see extra parking in this vicinity on our city-county campus. And I guess, have you addressed what that might cost to construct or plan for, I think you said around 60 to some cars in this vicinity? And then the second thing is, have you accounted for commute time from here to that facility? And I know the other day, we had a presentation on 14th and Warlick, and they were talking about 200 million of savings by having this elevated roundabout, and primarily due to time saved, and I got to thinking, well, how much is it going to cost over, that's over 25 years, what's it going to cost for police officers to commute back and forth in their time?
But both questions, they're great questions, Councilman, and one that we have looked at. So the first one is that currently our structure, other than our northeast geographic team and our center team at 1501 North 27th, all of our police vehicles are parked at 635 J Street. Now, in approximately two years, the southeast team will be co-locating with Lincoln Fire and Rescue at approximately 66th and Pine Lake Road. And so the southeast geographic team, those vehicles will move out there. But we still need to maintain a parking lot for our other cruisers here. And that is why, when we've looked at this current model, while we would propose the sale of the J Street facade and entrance and building of our current location, we would maintain a parcel of property on that current footprint that, where we could park our cruisers. Otherwise, you're right. We have about a five-minute commute time from 6th and J to the station versus this other location, which would be about 10, doubling the time, and that's something we're very cognizant of and not willing to compromise operationally at this particular point. And so we have taken those into account, and we don't believe that there will be an adverse impact.
If you retain that, do you know what that cost is, whether selling that property or, I suppose it's just an estimate at this time?
Yep, estimate.
And then, secondly, how many vehicles, how many cruisers or what have you would be in that lot?
The first, the first question is, is that we're estimating the current value of the entire parcel of current property, about 1.5 million. And so when we're using our estimates for the sale, we're taking away $500,000 to keep a parking lot. So we're being very conservative, because there wouldn't be any other existing structure other than a fence and a lot. As far as how many police cars will be parked there, after the move to the southeast location, approximately 100? Approximately 100 cars would still be maintained on this campus to service our southwest team, our criminal investigations, many of our support staff, and our northwest team.
Now, do you keep some of the parking adjacent to our property here that you, we see cruisers out there before they take off, or is that sort of a transient-type thing for just turnover of shift duties?
Most of those, not all, most of those are transient and are parked down at the 635 J until the officers come to work and then report here for duty. But some of our unmarked vehicles are parked around this campus.
If I may one follow-up, since you said it would be 100 vehicles, and you also prefaced your presentation about the growth southward from the Hay Market, having that, that could become more valuable property, would that be an interim surface lot-type situation and long-term have to make other arrangements, and have you thought about that at all?
The current plans would be, is that it'd be a surface lot, and we would have to have other options in place before we could sell that entire parcel. And as the value of that particular parcel increases, that'd be certainly something that we would have to look at in cooperation with maybe the Public Building Commission. I know that there is infrastructure in place. In fact, I believe that you were part of the forecasting of that infrastructure for the lot that is immediately to our north of, of the 555 South 10th Street building. And so the elevation of that and parking cars there would be another option, but we have not gone any further than thinking about it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a few, then. Going back to, just to follow up on Cindy's question about the studies that will determine whether or not you can build the addition on the, on the new property, what happens if the studies come back and say, actually, it's not possible? Where are you left at that point?
We're starting over. We're going back to the, the, the study that was completed in 2015, looking at our particular options. Because we do, we have these $600,000 in needed repairs. Pat has done a tremendous amount of research. This is not the first particular parcel of property that we have looked at, but they're very limited so as not to adversely affect operations by moving farther and farther away from the Hall of Justice. And another big potential, something that could help us, is that the, the lot that we're looking at is very close to the operations for the county engineer, and there's the potential to utilize some of the existing infrastructure that they have as far as fuel pumps, and I have had conversations with Pam Dingman about that, and certainly something that we'll continue to explore.
Okay. And then, you, you mentioned that the new site is further away from your main operations, and that's potentially a public safety drawback, but a pretty short timeframe, about, you said about five extra minutes, or?
Yeah, and I, I would not describe it as a, as a public safety drawback, other than if we were not to maintain a parking lot here.
Okay.
If we moved our entire fleet out there, and then we're taking five more minutes?
For every call.
Every single person that's reporting to duty, that, that would have a definite impact and one that we're not willing to compromise with.
Okay. Are there any other drawbacks that you see with the new location?
Actually, not. In fact, I'm so impressed with Pat and his management and how he has looked at all of these different options. He's a talented employee in the city of Lincoln, and is fortunate to have him, and I'm fortunate to be able to work with him.
And then, for people who are less familiar with your budget, there might be questions about how the police department has, you know, $750,000 cash on hand and then planning for another million using reappropriation dollars. Can you explain for everyone the nature of those dollars, why, why this is a good use and utilization of those dollars?
Certainly. There are no capital improvement funds that are built into the, the city budgeting process. And this is different from my previous experiences at the county. But we need to be very good stewards of these dollars. We need to be able to have a vision of where we can utilize them, and oftentimes, we're combining them with other funding modes, such as the fleet maintenance fund that Pat has gained savings through fuel and also by bringing in additional outside customers, not within the city, but outside government customers that are increasing his revenues. So that is, the existence of that $750,000 in reappropriated funds are ones that we have to look at. Is this the particular project that we use it on? And we've given that a lot of thought, and it is, we believe that it is.
And they're, they're one-time dollars, correct?
They are.
They couldn't fund an ongoing cost for your department?
That is correct.
Like additional staff? Okay.
Exactly. Because we can never forecast whether there'll be $1 or be able to save over the years of those reappropriated dollars, so to use, utilize them for an ongoing basis would not be.
And then, looking at the budget for this project, there's a reliance on reappropriation dollars out into the future. Could you just explain how you calculated what your future reappropriation estimate would be? I realize that you have realized the savings to date for the, the current year figure, but looking out to the $1,047,000 figure, what, what builds that reappropriation amount?
And those are complete projections, but once again, it's a great question. And we're using trending analysis to be able to look at if we don't, some of those funds are come from overtime dollars. So we budget for a 470-person organization and overtime dollars that might be associated with that. Sometimes, we don't spend that amount, and that contributes to these reappropriation dollars that carry over from year to year. And anything that we can do internally to search for efficiencies also contribute to that, looking towards, this is a project that is needed to continue to serve the citizens of Lincoln and our agency, and so that, that's where those forecasts come from. It's really trending analysis.
So is any of it existing cash on hand, or is it, is it just what you expect to accumulate between this fiscal year and 2021?
Phase one, phase one is cash on hand. So that is a combination of $750,000 in reappropriated funds from the Lincoln Police Department general expense budget and 1.25 million from the police garage fund balance. The future dollars, so that, that comes up to 2 million, we're projecting the cost at just over 4. Another million of that is projected upon the sale of 635 J, and the others are based upon trending analysis for reappropriated dollars that we believe can be dedicated to this particular project without adversely affecting other CIP projects that the Lincoln Police Department has. Now, the beauty of this is, is that if we can't come up with those funds, we don't have to raise taxes, have a general obligation bond issued, we can just push off into the future the actual expansion, the 17,000-square-foot expansion.
That was going to be my next question. Thank you. Okay. All right. Appreciate your presentation. Well, just one moment. Was there, the presentation from Pat as well took a company yours, or?
Pat was here to provide needed, needed support or answer any questions. Pat, did you have anything else you'd like to add, sir?
Okay. All right. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Please come forward if you, if you would like to speak. You.
Sherri Pope Gonzalez, only man in this room that I'm impressed with, is right there. I've almost run him over twice, because I can smell him. Can't see without my glasses, but I can smell him. You know what he smells like? My daddy's barber shop. My daddy hasn't had that barber shop since I was five years old. You know what you smell like? A United States Marine. So when I say I can smell you, it wasn't because you were bad, because you were good. Now, punked him out first time I saw you, didn't I? What'd I say? I like red. I do like red, for the fireman. Now, if you people don't get your shit together, you can tell me not to cuss. See this right here? This is what happens when a meth lab explodes, and a meth lab does not care if you have children, or you're deputy armsman, or you have a store, or you're crippled, or Jeff, your child. And we'll leave you alone today, okay? Now, if you do not do something to help this man, all those art sculptures you have and all those fancy buildings you have, when they go up in flames, and the idiots who drive the fire trucks, and the idiots who look like this man have to go in there to bring your sorry asses out because you didn't do preventive maintenance, oh, don't let me, don't let me break my glasses. What are you people going to do? What are you people going to do? Keep building jails? I've been putting up with your beggar factories for 21 years. Did you know you even import beggars? You know what a beggar is? B-E-G-G-A-R. You have so many of them. Let me tell you, and you know why I can't, I can't hear, can I? I can't hear. You helped my house turn into a cemetery. So did you, Eskridge. All right? Come look at the cemetery you helped create. Thank God that little man's still alive, huh? Now, this is what happens at your beggar factories. You turn out beggars, drunks, drugies, thieves, and convicts, and I'm damn straight tired of paying for it. I'm tired of burying fireman and policeman and iron man and anybody else sitting out here. I am tired, all right? So start doing your job. And if you don't think for one minute I haven't done your job, I guess you don't know the rules of engagement. I've done your job. My people have done your job. You're just a little bitty squat town out here in the middle of nowhere, think you're somebody. If you pay all that money for your entertainment and you don't take care of your security forces, you're stupid. Now, I'm going to tell you what my granny would have told me. My great-grandmother said this, "You deaf, dumb, and blind are just plain stupid." Here's her name. Make sure somebody writes it down. Jessie, J-E-S-S-E, Custer, C-U-S-T-E-R, Kibel, K-I-B-E-L. She is buried in the Goodland, Kansas cemetery, so none of you impress me. This little man, I would bow to. He impresses me. Now, I'm done for the moment. You know what my name is. I live 349 South First Street. Want a contribution to your campaign? Can you catch?
Please don't throw. Thank you. You can leave it with the clerk.
No, no, no. Can you hand it to him? I need a receipt. Oh. Honey, do you, honey, have you ever seen how, how, I am old woman. You're going to have to come around. Oh, here, can you write my name, baby boy?
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Please call the next time, Teresa.
All right. Next is item 13, approving a transfer of appropriations in the amount of $1,172,955,000 from future labor settlements to 0182 roadway and bridge rehabilitation to cover a portion of projected cost of the 84th and Havelock intersection improvements.
Is there someone here to represent this item from the city? Can we have someone from finance at least come up or from the administration to discuss this transfer? Move the microphone up, sorry. There you go. Thank you. Sherri Wolf Durble, City Finance Department. Would you help us understand what this item proposes to do?
There is a need due to, there's always been a need, Mickey, right, for the improvement at the intersection, but the Lancaster Event Center has been fortunate to get some major rodeo events coming into Lincoln in several years. I think Amy's here, could help us address that in a moment.
Mickey Esposito, Director of Public Works and Utilities. Actually, I thought our law department was going to take the lead on this because the fact sheet was fill, I'm sorry, Jeff, I didn't communicate with you, but we have Randy Hoskins here to talk about the project specifically, if that's what City Council wants to hear on. I think finance is here to talk about the fund transfer. So that's kind of the
Yeah.
...distribution of information. So what do you want to hear about first? I guess I would ask the City Council.
Why don't you, since you're here, just tell us about how the fund transfer works, because it is a significant one, and then we'll have Randy come up and talk about the merits of the project.
Perfect.
Thank you.
At the time that we adopted the 2000, I got to go back, 1416 budget, several of our labor unions had not settled their contracts for that biennial period at that point in time, so we had to make some significant projections of what those increases might be, I think for four or five bargaining units. So the money has been carried forward from the 1416 budgets until late this summer, I believe it was the fire union was the final union to settle their contract. And when all of those unions were settled and the payments were made to the employees, there was a million, 170,000-some dollars remaining from those estimates that we had made two years ago of what the salary increases and the fringe benefit increases might be.
Okay. Thank you. And, oh, I guess one question for you. Did you have a question, Jane? Is this the full remaining balance?
This is it. This is the
Won't be any left.
Total amount, no. And that was over a two-year period.
Minus the transfer that happened mid-biennium?
Yes. There was a small amount. Yes, there was a small amount of money transferred at the end of the 1516 year to the Police and Fire Pension Fund.
Based on amendment that I made, and that went to the police-fire pension?
Yes.
Okay, John?
Yes, well, and that's what I was gonna address, was the fact, at one point, there'd been some consideration to take this amount and go ahead and help fund the deficit in the police and firefighters' pension.
Are you talking, John, about this year or in prior years?
About this dollar amount. I know it wouldn't fund it all, but it would help reduce it. And I guess the 84th and Havelock has been out there, and definitely I recognize the need. But initially, that was an interest I had to help get it into the firefighter, the police and firefighters' pension. And I'm just wondering at what point that concept was shifted. Because I had expressed that to the administration months ago.
Right. I know there were discussions about that. I personally don't know exactly when the decision was made. I think this is a proposal that just came forward to meet this need.
Carl?
Yes, thank you. Which unions does this involve, do you know?
It was police, and fire, and page, and CEA, I believe.
Okay. Thank you, Sherri.
All right, now the infrastructure piece. So I'll let sort of Randy lead the charge on. I think he has some aerial maps and information to share with you about this intersection and the improvement planned. But if you recall, last fall, we had a meeting, a super commons meeting with both council and county board, and this question and this need came forward to you as a group, just expressing the traffic issues and concerns that have been raised for many years out here. Amy Dickerson was available at that time to share with us sales, sales tax revenue receipts, and why, she was sort of making a case for why this was important, not just for Lancaster County, but also Lincoln as a city, and also the state in attracting events. And so from that time, we've sort of worked with Amy to clarify the need, clarify what we would do out here to improve the intersection. And I can't answer your question about the timing of things, but we have been advocating for this project ever since. What we were able to come up with is about a million dollars of funding from impact fees, but we just couldn't come up with the other million. And so this presented an opportunity for us to build the intersection the way it needs to be built.
Yeah, I guess with this project, Randy Hoskins, Assistant City Engineer. What this project will do is it will build a number of turn lanes that will both allow Havelock to operate more efficiently when we've got events going on at the Lancaster Event Center, as well as some improvements to the intersection of 84th and Havelock, adding some turn lanes, aligning the intersections so that it's safer and vehicles can turn through there better. We had, at one point, looked at raising the grade of Havelock out there to bring it up out of the floodplain, but I think further study, and I'm not sure we're gonna be able to do that because of then we're raising the floodplain. So we're still looking into that as we get into the design of the project.
Jean?
So Randy, as you're heading west on Havelock, how many additional left turn lanes are you creating?
It'll be a single left turn lane, a through lane, and a right turn lane. Right now, it's just a single lane out there, and this will, this will, if you've been out there watching traffic at all during an event letting out, it just backs up forever because you don't have enough lanes, so this will help that a lot.
So do you anticipate a greater flow of traffic through there? And does that mean that you'll have to rely less on actual people or law enforcement to redirect the traffic and keep it moving?
That would certainly be the hope, that by the use of the signal and having the additional lanes out there, that the intersection should operate much more efficiently. I can't say whether or not we'll be able to get rid of the officers completely, but I think there's probably a good chance of that.
I think a lot of the push, too, is the particular users, the Lancaster County Event Center. Amy's trying very hard to attract these folks to come to Lancaster County for these events, and they have large vehicles and big trailers. And so in widening this area and creating this traffic flow, it'll allow her to be able to sell this event center to, in competing with and for events.
Could you run through the other sources of funding for the project again? You mentioned impact fees.
Yeah. So the history-
Or other partners in the project?
Well, we, Lancaster County Event Center is currently owned and operated by the Agricultural Society. And this was actually approached a long time ago in 2008 as a developer agreement. And so the history of this is that the Ag Society entered into a developer agreement with the city. So it is impact fee eligible for those turn lane movements as a piece of infrastructure improvement. So District Four impact fees currently have about a million dollars. It has more than a million dollars, but we would devote about a million dollars of impact fee to this intersection improvement. The total cost for the project is just over 2 million.
2.27 million is what we're estimating right now.
And that, yeah, go ahead.
I guess one thing I might point out is that not all of this project is impact fee eligible. And so that also plays into the fact that we cannot use impact fees for the entire amount of the project.
So the developable side, where we're going to be using impact fees is more on the east side of the intersection, but the west side of the intersection where Havelock is, and some parts of 84th, are not impact fee eligible. So we couldn't devote 100% impact fees to this. And that's where this additional funding really supports the completion of the project.
So are we maximizing the impact fee dollars? We're using as many of those dollars as we have available or could be spent?
We are maximizing the amount of eligible costs to use impact fees. Yeah.
But there are more impact fee dollars available for that district?
In District Four. Right. So if another development, maybe this spurs more development in that area, then we would be able to turn those impact fees over for those uses.
This project, we could not spend more impact fees, correct?
That's right. That's what we're saying.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Please come forward.
Hi, Amy Dickerson, Managing Director, Lancaster Event Center at 4100 North 84th Street. Wanted to thank you for your consideration of this proposal. This surprised me that this was, a creative solution might have been found. Many of you know that we just won a new national rodeo. It's called the National High School Finals Rodeo. That'll be starting to come here in 2020 every two out of six years, and that'll be 16 million dollars of additional impact that Lancaster Event Center and Lancaster is proud to host on behalf of Lincoln and Lancaster County. Just to give you a sense of what 16 million dollars, that's in talking to Dr. Eric Thompson over at UNL's Economic Research. That's equivalent to about two football Saturdays. So we'll have 1,700 high school contestants out here over 10 days, 13 performances, as many as 13,000 people on the property for 10 days straight. And that's actually in addition to over 300 events. If I just, I'm not an expert at this. Will that show if I? So, there we go. Okay. We have over 300 shows now at the Lancaster Event Center. And who knew 16 years ago, when we opened up the Lancaster Event Center, what all people would want to do as the state fairgrounds closed, as Pershing closed, as people learned about Lancaster Event Center, and then all the wonderful development that's happening in Lincoln? You know, we talk a lot about what's happening downtown and with Pinnacle and everything. That's an attractive reason why to come to Lincoln, that we talked to groups about, including the National High School Finals Rodeo. And if you look at down the list here, you'll see a lot of these events are very large. And if you look at, for example, we have the largest farm show in December west of the Mississippi for the entire year, and there's, what does it say, 18,000 people there over three days. And trying to move them to all exit, they all leave at the same time, and to try to move them through that single lane leaving on Havelock. We have, that was actually one of my first lessons in my first fair there in 2014, that we have to actually force people to go out of 84th Street. They want to go to Lincoln. We don't let them turn left with LPD help, and so they have to go down to the Havelock intersection and do a U-turn, or go left through Havelock to get back to Lincoln. Because I tried to, you know, you'd think logically, well, just send them out on Havelock. Well, you can't send everybody through one side of a traffic light. We have to use two sides, even though it's very non-intuitive to folks to deal that. So we had, when I did that, we had folks waiting on the property 45 minutes, an hour, when I tried to force them all to go through Havelock. I get complaints all the time on our Facebook from people in person, that kind of thing. Have you ever had anybody share a screen on here?
No.
Let's see. Oh, yay. Okay. I didn't have time to get this photo. March is our busiest month. And so this is a photo from the first weekend of March this year. This is our largest single day that we have at Lancaster Events, or that's a car swap meet. And all those cars are there, and there's about 20% of the cars you can't even see in that picture. All come in in about three hours on a Sunday morning. Don't go on the first Sunday in March past the Lancaster Event Center when this car swap meet is going on. Before I got there, we had lines of traffic going, of all the vendors and customers trying to come in, and the traffic was going out on Cornhusker Highway and out on I-80 at that point. So this is the kind of how popular we are to come and visit. And we sure have come up with some ways to manage it, but we're at, we're beyond capacity for that single lane leaving. The other thing, and Pam taught, you know, mentioned this to me, our county engineer, is that with these, as Mickey was talking about, these very large trailers, and if any of you have seen the cattle and the horse trailers that come in, and that's kind of what's unique about Lancaster Event Center, that you can't do in other, you know, properties in town. We're talking 50, 55 feet plus trying to get through that intersection, and they can't even make the turn safely. So for safety and to continue to try to do more impact, this is what Mickey mentioned, just on economic impact. We're driving about 40 million dollars of impact out there right now. The National High School Finals Rodeo is gonna bring another 16. A lot of our current shows are growing. So we're happy to do that, and it should help a little bit to understand that a lot of that impact is also local taxes. So the city of Lincoln is at least getting over a million dollars each year from all the show activity that's happening out there at Lancaster Events Center, and we sure will do our best to keep growing that. So I appreciate your consideration of this. It is a time-sensitive request because of that National High School Finals Rodeo coming in 2020. Even with all our best efforts, we'll be lucky to get this done by 2019, the year before they come. It'll be an all-year project, and I don't know how we're gonna run 300 shows in the fair and some construction we have to do for the rodeo, but we will figure it out for behalf of Lincoln and Lancaster County, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Amy. Thanks for being here tonight. Thanks for all you do out there. You're doing a great job. I love going out and visiting out at the event center. It certainly has become quite a booming place. You mentioned the trailers turning off, and I know that this is a great safety concern out there. Do most of the exhibitors that are using trailers turn in off of the Havelock Avenue?
For example, that car swap meet that I showed you, almost all of them are coming from I-80, coming from Waverly Exit. But we have trailers coming from all directions. They're not really, most of them are not going through Havelock, you know, the town of Havelock. They're coming one way or another on 84th Street.
Sure. And so the proposal there would make it safer for those turning in and out?
That's right.
Would anything in what's being done help the, what you had indicated was the ability to turn left out of the event center onto 84th Street?
Yeah, as Randy was mentioning, so imagine today you just have a single lane leaving the event center going, I'm terrible with directions, west on Havelock. Right now, there's one lane, and you're stuck behind it. So now there'll be a left lane to go to Lincoln, there'll be a right lane to go to Waverly to I-80, and there'll be a straight to go to Havelock. So that is gonna be a three times improvement from what we have today.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
John?
Thank you very much, and I would echo what my colleague said about your management. You've done a very good job.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. On your chart, you showed, I believe, 27,000 hotel rooms a year?
Yes.
And of course, that generates lodging and sales taxes. Could you address the, I guess, number one, out of your people who come, do a lot of them stay in their trailers? I've heard horses, people and others like to rent an extra stall and sleep in that with the families. Could you talk a little bit about the actual experience?
It varies a lot. It varies a lot. So, in fact, I just got a call from somebody else that's interested in putting a hotel out on 84th Street, which we would love. A lot of our events would love to have some closer hotels. I can tell you that the new state bridge at 84th and Holdridge is having a land office business. They, we just learned that they're already sold out for a mid-June horse show that's growing from about 500 stalls worth of horses to 700 some. That's at our capacity. We're hoping to add some more capacity in the future. But there are a significant number of folks, like in our high-end horse shows, that don't, that want to stay in hotels, like that farm show that I mentioned, all those vendors, you can talk to hotels about December, and the farm show is their big bright spot for December. So that's what really drives is a lot of the, and that's what we're going after there is, we've had a lot of local/regional when I got there, and now we're trying to bump it up and also work in some more national events, and those are the kind that'll even drive more hotel rooms. And we're partnering with the Chamber of Commerce, the Visitors Promotion Committee, and the county and the city to work on that.
So with the sales and lodging tax, especially the lodging that's generated, was this project something that might get some assistance from the Convention Visitors Bureau?
You know, they have been very, very generous. We just completed a five-year grant that did some much-needed improvements, which have allowed us to drive this growth that I'm talking about. And we just recently, last fall, to get the National High School Finals Rodeo, we needed to make some improvements on the grounds to be mainly on the outdoors. Our buildings are more than sufficient, but some outdoor, such as some outdoor arena space and some upgrades in our campground. And they have committed 3 million dollars out of that lodging tax fund. You might remember it was in the news about the same time that the zoo was also asking for a very large grant. And Trent was in the room, I believe, when we did that. So it's a very, very, they have really come, you know, are doing everything that they can out of lodging tax, absolutely, to support. We would not have gotten that event without that grant. And I would tell you that there's not another million dollars to be had there. Trent was there. He can testify to that.
Those, the funds for the larger projects are kind of encumbered in a lot of things that we've seen come before this body. The smaller grants are kind of available, but for the larger funds, they're attached to arena projects, their projects, zoo, other places. So we're not seeing the level of large projects come through the Visitors Promotion Committee. The zoo and theirs is really the last ones that we're probably gonna see for a little while because we've encumbered a lot of funds. But if we grow the lodging tax dollars, there'll be more, I mean, with events like this, we grow lodging tax dollars. We'll see more money come in, which adds additional capacity for those bigger projects.
What you're saying, because of the encumbered nature, some of those lodging taxes, then, that they go multi-year? So you can't project down the road that this could help on this project?
Yeah, and then the other thing is that if they've made their application, they can't really come back for a while. So unfortunately, she's, she's made her ass and got her money. She can't come back.
It's already split over five years, in fact. Yeah, just not, because of what was available.
Yeah.
Yep.
But it's a really good committee. I would highly recommend it.
Any other questions?
In two months.
I have a question.
Sure.
So we've got a, had a quick briefing on what the intersection improvements would comprise. Is that gonna really fix all your problems out there for the traffic flow? I mean, it seems like the design, you know, are there other improvements that need to be done to actually get the fix that you need? Or is this sufficient?
Hmm, I mean, I think I might need Randy to answer that question.
Well, just even internally to your site, I mean, the design, you know, of a huge center to just drop off onto this, you know, one lane, of course, doesn't make sense for the long term.
I think it's gonna go a long way. Like I said, it'll be three times the capacity leaving, which, and what happens is, the car swap meet I showed you is one of the few where everyone's coming in at once. But most of them, the problem is, is, you know, you have a show, you know, the demo derby, a concert, a rodeo, whatever, and everyone leaves at the same time, you know? And so if you can imagine, you all know how many cars are in a parking garage, and you take three, four, six of those parking garages, and you're trying to put them all in one lane out, what the backup would be, and that's really what we have right now. And that's really what we have right now. So the three times will help and then I'm sure we'll still be pushing people towards eighty-fourth Street as well. Um, on the property, we have very wide driveway, driveways, um, two lanes on each side. And so that, that's sufficient. I think, uh, I think we're in good shape there. So we're, we're barely hanging on, you know, right now, kind of with lots of people thrown at it. So I know that, you know, with three times the capacity leaving, that's really going to be a huge help, I think, for a long time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Thank you.
If anyone else would like to testify, please come forward. I know we have a couple of people who are here to speak, so.
I have a quick question. Do you want me to say it from here?
No, please, please approach.
You know, I have a tumor. I have a question. Terry Pope Gonzalez, founder, South, South Salt Creek. Got the thing going? Get it going. South Salt Creek Community Organization. What happens if somebody calls a boycott? What happens? No more sales tax, right? Lodging tax? Is that what you said? So what happens if somebody calls a boycott and says, "I don't care if you drive a thousand miles around Nebraska, boycott it." Let me tell you the people I come from. I own three forty-nine South First Street. There is U-stop, Pump and Pantry, Gettin' Spit. We boycott them. We go clear up to Casey's. Now what happens if somebody says, "Do not gamble again in Nebraska. Do not come to another show in Nebraska. Do not let me smell you in Nebraska." What happens? We have another grant? Grant is city money, state money, federal money, right? Taxpayers money, right? Right, Jane? Taxpayers money. How does the federal government make their money? Now I'm going to offend you. Please close your ears, Teresa. Do they shit it out? Now I'm going to go back and I'm going to behave. I just thought I'd get that on there. Where does the money come from? If somebody calls a boycott and says, "Take your fleet of trucks through Iowa, but go around Nebraska. Take your fleet of trucks. Make sure you stay out of Nebraska." Those horses you have? And just so you understand, I know what you're talking about. Do you know what an eight-second boy is? Do you guys know what an eight? This, you know, this is not, you know, the time that you can't answer. Do you know what an eight-second boy is, Roy, you?
We, we aren't going to be taking questions. We're here to hear you.
Oh, I know you are. Listen, I know exactly. I've watched you guys for twenty-one years and you suck, okay? An eight-second boy is a rodeo boy that rides that buckin' rodeo cow thing, okay? They don't have to come to Nebraska. There's lots of other places for them to go. They don't have to show their high-end horses. See, I have this talent, don't I, Carl? Can I call a race? Called Jayhawks. They didn't take the final four, but they got there, didn't they? Guess who team I called last year? Wisconsin. Called it July twenty-ninth. Do you know I called the Triple Crown? That's hard. Three races in a row is hard. I have this talent. Some people call it a gift. I call it a curse. When you elect a public official, you are paid by tax dollars. Not your dollars, wow, your taxpayers, but not the mayor's. It's not out of the mayor's pocketbook. It's not out of Jeff's pocketbook. It's out of the citizens. Now are the citizens of Lincoln, Nebraska that stupid that they're just going to let you keep wasting their money? Here and then I'm going to finish. There's a big difference between you up there and us down there. We pay your wages and you waste ours. Come over to the cemetery. You, right there, helped build it. You helped build it. You helped build it. You helped build it. You guys I like, so we're going to, Mickey, I'm, I'm good with you. Jeff, I hold you personally responsible. Thank God Marty didn't kill himself. Now when they call suicide a disease, does it hurt less or does it hurt more? I'm done.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item?
My name is Ron Trubam. I'm the president of the Lincoln Firefighters Association at two forty-one Victory Lane. And I'd like to speak in opposition of this item. First, I'd like to make clear that we are not in opposition to the improvement of the intersection at eighty-fourth and Havelock. Uh, but that's not the issue that's before you today. It is the transfer of the one point one million dollars from the Future Labor, Labor Settlements, uh, Fund. I would say the first thing that's frustrating to us is that, uh, the testimony that came earlier was that the firefighters were the last union to settle their contract and I believe that's correct. So I think the city, uh, was very knowledgeable about exactly how much money was left at that time. Uh, while the firefighters were negotiating to improve and increase services to the public, uh, the city would have had us believe that they could not afford another dollar in their budget. So it is a bit frustrating to look at the email chain, uh, from the mayor's staff to the council members and see the mayor's staff applaud the negotiating team for holding the line so that they can then use this money for some other project. Now I saw in the email chain that, uh, there were a couple of suggestions made by the council members on where that money should be spent. Uh, Mr. Camp and, and Ms. Lamb, I think both, uh, offered to spend that money or suggested to spend that money at the Police and Fire Pension Fund. And, uh, the same way that we budget our money at home, we would be responsible with it and we would want you to do the same with taxpayer dollars. The one point one million dollars to go to the Police and Fire Pension Fund is really a simple calculation. You can put it in a calculator online or you could just use your phone or any other calculator and see that, see that, uh, one point one million dollars today has a much larger impact as it is accumulating interest, compounding interest at a rate of seven point five percent. It's not the rate that I picked. That's the rate that the actuary determines, the actuary that the city hired. So the city hires an actuary, says, "How much will our money earn?" Actuary says seven and a half percent. You put one point one million dollars in there, it equals nine point six million dollars after the thirty years. So I would say that this is the wisest return on the taxpayers' dollars. If we were budgeting our money at home, we would look at how we would, we would invest it and how we would spend it wisely. And then we would also look at immediate needs. And the intersection at eighty-fourth and Havelock might be an immediate need, but we would say that it's not nearly as great of a need as the suggestion that came from Councilwoman Larry and Gaylor Baird. And that would be on the apparatus replacement, uh, for fire apparatus in the city of Lincoln. There's, uh, twenty-two fire suppression apparatus in the city. Seventeen of them need immediate replacement. Two more qualify for replacement. It is costing money, uh, for the city to try to keep those on the roads. It jeopardizes the safety of the firefighters who are responding in them and it jeopardizes the safety of the public to not have safe and reliable fire apparatus. So, uh, to close, I would like to say that it, it is up to the council to decide how they, how they handle this action. But if you want to be responsible with the money, you would either look at how you most wisely invest it or you would look at the most important need of the citizens today and it would be one of those two topics.
Any questions from the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? All right, seeing none, please call the next item.
All right, next is item fourteen, Comp Plan Conformance one seven zero zero three, approving an amendment to the Westo Redevelopment Plan to add the Nature's Variety Redevelopment Project to remove blight and substandard conditions and strengthen the business community in the Westo Street area through the redevelopment of three underdeveloped parcels through the construction of an approximately twenty-four thousand square foot freeze drying facility and development of a processing center and a frozen storage facility on property generally located at thirty-two zero three Westview Avenue and two thirty-five three oh one three eleven, three twenty-one and three thirty-three Southwest Thirty-second Street.
Members of the council, David Landis, the Urban Development Department Director and the applicant in this case. This is an amendment to the Westo Redevelopment Plan. It's necessary because you need to have the plan describe the kinds of projects that may be forthcoming and we very much hope to have a project with, uh, Nature's Variety, um, a high-end, uh, first-rate business currently located in Nebraska, in Lincoln, and is in, uh, planning to expand that holding, uh, on Westo.
Um, here's the Westo area and the location that we're talking about is roughly here in purple, uh, the purple color which is marked industrial. If you were to look at the specific location that we're talking about, this is the series of phases that Nature's Variety would like to make use of. Their initial twenty-four thousand square foot building that was described to you as part of the project would be here. That's the first phase. Then there is to be a freezer and processing floor, which would be the second phase, and then a final kibble production plant area there. So it would take a, a, a series of times, but the very first of those is in the offing and it is the freeze drying, uh, location that's being looked at. There are currently about a hundred and twenty employees in this city, out of a hundred and, oh, two hundred and fifty that the company has. The other half of their employees are located in California, Oregon, Kansas and Ohio. And part of the net effect of this will be to expand Lincoln employment as they draw in some of the employment that they have in other locations. Um, this is not the redevelopment agreement itself. Um, that would be forthcoming. You get a chance to see it in the event you agree with us and with the Planning Commission that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan for the retention and expansion of existing business, for the appropriate use of industrial land for an industrial purpose and for, um, the, the development of the community. The Planning Commission heard this on consent calendar, voted nine oh to see it, uh, on its way to the path that brings us here today. And should you give us permission to continue, we would then undertake a discussion with the developer as we are currently are discussing with them in hopes of finding a redevelopment agreement that you would approve of. I will say this, the company has quadrupled in size in the last eight years and they hope to double again in the next four years. And the location, the center for that growth is this area and this project that we are describing and hopefully amending the redevelopment plan for the Westo to make room for. Are there questions that I can answer? Or I can also tell you the developers here as well and able to answer questions about their intentions.
Dave, um, how, how is this eligible for TIF? The, the underdeveloped parcels aren't necessarily blighted or what, what, what are the blight conditions that you are expecting to be removed? Or how does this project line up with blight criteria?
In fact, I, I perhaps I'll let Tom, uh, talk about that a little bit more. In a redevelopment area, you need to show the existence of the substandard and the blighted conditions, but you don't need to show it with respect to each and every parcel of land. You need to say that this is an area that is in need of redevelopment. Uh, if you, uh, take a look at the Westo area, I, I, I don't carry with me the specific findings of blight and substandard in the area, so I can't recite those for you. Um, if you'd like, on the other hand, I could include, uh, a, a recapitulation of what those findings were um, in a memo form to the council. In many of the areas in the, in this area, there are drainage problems. It falls away to the south. But I can't describe this specific location as having those conditions present. Um, but it, those are among the conditions that were present in the Westo area, I know, because I've seen it with respect to other areas and other, other pieces of land.
Thank you.
Members of the council, uh, my name is Tom Houston. My address is two three three South Thirteenth Street, Suite nineteen hundred here in Lincoln. Appearing before you today on behalf of Nature's Variety, uh, I want to talk a little bit about the phasing plan. Nature's Variety currently exists, it is a Nebraska corporation, but they're primarily based out of St. Louis now and they have three locations in which they operate here in Lincoln. One on North Fifty-sixth Street. Uh, they had a, a free, a freezer facility down at Seventh and Inn Street and, and they leased this facility at, on Southwest Thirty-second Street. Uh, they've made the conscious decision to relocate and consolidate their operations in Lincoln, Nebraska and this Phase One is in front of you before, before you today for that purpose. Uh, the Phase One really would, uh, involve the significant investment by the company. Uh, the, the company currently leases the building in the north. It is a large industrial concrete building that, uh, the, uh, Nature's Variety's been occupying under lease with its current owner. Nature's Variety has the option to acquire that property along with all the other undeveloped empty lots of this subdivision, which intends to exercise, uh, depending upon the actions of the council here. Uh, this, the new facility that would be constructed on the southern three lots, there, there are lots four, five and six, is approximately twenty-four thousand square feet, uh, drive-freeze facility. Currently, in their current operations, they have to ship all of their product and they are a pet food manufacturer. I meant to, forgot to mention that, but they are a pet food manufacturer and they ship their product to Oregon for the freeze drying process. Obviously this will help them be much more efficient in their operations and, uh, here in Lincoln. Uh, the, the Phase Two of the project is really intended to fill in the gap on lots two and three. That's anticipated would to be, happen within two to three years. And then ultimately, uh, Nature's Variety, Variety would intend to relocate their kibble manufacturing facility, uh, bringing the employees on the property to the west. Uh, the, the plan amendment in front of you, I believe, is consistent with the comprehensive plan that really does identify Westo as an industrial area, as a corridor, uh, entryway corridor to the city and, uh, try to, uh, emphasize that aspect of it. The original blight study was done approximately ten years ago and did identify this area as an entryway corridor, tried to encourage a, a bunch of objectives and I think this project meets those objectives, but one of which was to enhance the entryway corridor, but also to enhance the industrial expenditures and industrial investment within the Westo area. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Um, uh, as Director Landis indicated, we are working on a redevelopment agreement. We would hope to be back in front of you within several weeks. Uh, because this is a industrial facility, it really doesn't generate huge amounts of value. Uh, we have, you can see in a cost benefit analysis that's included within the amendment to the redevelopment plan, approximately two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which in the relative perspective of tax increment financing projects is a lower amount. But that's really because of the conservative calculations that we used in the projections based upon the industrial valuation of the property. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Jane.
Tom, in the presentation, it talks, "The development of the Phase One project site will eliminate the existence of blight and substandard conditions."
Correct.
So what are the, some of the sub, if you could recap again, what are the, some of the substandard conditions and blight that it intends to eliminate?
I'm going to refer you back to the community development law in particular because the community development law talks about blight and substandard conditions and as does the Constitution, any larger area. Individual properties, property by property basis, don't have to meet those definitions, but the property is, as a whole, the area as a whole, have to meet the definition for blight and substandard. When you look at individual properties, there may be vacant properties that it's tough to argue that they're blighted and substandard. It doesn't mean they don't qualify because they're included in a larger area that has those conditions. So I, I, I think the fact that this property is included in the redevelopment area, the Westo area in and of itself indicates that the property has already been, the, the council's already made that determination ten years ago when the blight study was adopted. But I, I, I don't think I can sit here and tell you that this property is, because it hasn't been developed, uh, has any specific blight conditions that would be otherwise disqualifying if there was an independent study being, occurring today. But that's not how we do blight studies. Blights, in this blight study, when you look at it, it ranges from Ninth Street on the east to West Seventieth Street on the west, from P Street on the north down to the railroad track south of O Street. I mean, it's a long corridor that was approved by the council, like I said, ten years ago.
Well, I know, but the, it specifically says in Phase One that it will take care of some of those conditions that would improve either the, the streetscape or the appearance on Westo. Is that part of Phase One or Phase One is just really focusing on the, the building itself?
I think Phase One is focusing on the industrial investment that is encouraged to happen within this redevelopment area. The site, when you drive by it, it's probably forty feet lower than O Street as you drive by it. That, that, there's a significant grade change. Um, it's not even visible from O Street, so as a part of the entryway corridor, I mean, that's kind of a tough argument to make. But it does- But it does present real topographic challenges for development, and that can be a barrier to develop. And that was part of the conditions that are being addressed by the blight study. But again, that blight study, that blight determination that happened 10 years ago, it's not in front of you today.
So the blight study was done 10 years ago?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much for your presentation. Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
I didn't even know I was going to talk so much. Glad I keep my ass home. I can't, no, I told you I wouldn't cuss.
Thank you for that. We appreciate it. We are on TV.
Actually, I'm not in church, so, but, but, here you go. I brought you each one, one for you, one for you, one for Eskridge, Gaylor Barrett, Christensen, Fellers, Cindy Lamb, one for you, Teresa. We've had it already. It's about the TIF money. You know what my husband does? Bails bridges. I know all about building. Man's done it for 40 years. I also know about the taxpayers' bill of rights. I also know about property valuation protests. Wow. When you did our blight study was when? 16, 17 years ago? Now I carry these, don't I? These are Epi pens. They cost $500 apiece. I go through two a week. You got that kind of money to waste? Must, right? You thought I did, right? You're the one who came over, right? Well, let me tell you, you almost got eight today, didn't you? I got a four-legged husband. He don't care. He don't care about any of you. Now, when you do your studies and you do all your fancy, you want to have these too, honey? Thank you. When you do all your fancy studies, see, we were open fields, but somebody somewhere thought we needed to have a concrete company. Wow. My husband even put in that part of that arena bridge. Would you like me to really tell you what happened at that bridge? It wasn't what the paper says and it wasn't what you people said. You know what, Hawkins? If Dave Walling's daddy would have still been there, he'd have taken every dime you had. Now here's a picture of Al Capone. Yes, my dog's name is Al Capone, because the other one was murdered by that concrete company. So a little pissed off today, aren't I? Yes, I am. Well, see about property valuation? I'm tired and I'm tired of coming in doing your jobs. See all this? So now what we're going to do, I am writing it in the back. Do you know what a Freedom of Information Act means? Jeff, I'm getting ready to find out about your kid. Thank you that the K2 is gone. I heard your kid was smoking it and that's why he jumped off the building. I don't know if it is or is it?
Ms. Gonzalez, please.
No, no, I get my minutes.
You could stick to city issues.
Yeah, that is city issues. He's the city attorney, okay? Now, I don't appreciate what you people did to me. And so now, I don't appreciate what you people are doing to other people. Because guess what? We were in the flood plain and I still pay flood insurance on top of these. This is not a city issue. The crusher's over on Third and Q and they've been poisoning all of downtown for how long? So you know what? I'm sure these people here are saying, "I sure hope that woman stays home." But you know what? I guess I'm coming to all these meetings. I guess I'm even coming to the mayor's roundtable. You like tequila? I'll bring it. Now, do I drink it? No, but I'll let you drink it. Now, when they did the blight study 10 years ago, they knew exactly what they were going to do. Let's do a, here, how this all started. One of your rich people of the community, this is what he said to me after he cut down my husband's birth tree. My husband was born April 3rd, 1953 in Lincoln, Nebraska. In that house, 349 South 1st Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, was open fields, but somebody thought they needed it. So when they cut down that tree, I called him up. This is what your leadership said, and I quote, I said, "This is Mrs. Gonzalez," and I, why, he knows who he is. Here, I got a few more minutes. This is what he said. "I'm not going to have a pissing contest with you." That's his words, not mine. So this is what I said. "Excuse me? You speak to me like that?" This is what he said. "I'm running off the Mexicans." I said, "I'm Italian. Looks like I'm staying." So his auto auction is not behind me, is it? That had been one cluster. And I won't say the word. Do you know the word? I'll spell it. F-U-C-K.
No, please, thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Seeing none, please call the next item, Teresa.
All right, we'll go on to our ordinance's second reading. Item 15, approving a master lease agreement between the city and Mobility for the purpose of installing, maintaining, and operating communications equipment on certain City of Lincoln properties, utility poles, and/or facilities.
Members of the council, David Young, Public Works, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak on this issue today. This is a follow-up agreement to the Verizon small cell contract that was signed in January. There are no material differences between the two agreements. Rental term, agreement length, construction standards are all the same. There are a few minor differences based on the business model of each company.
Any questions for David? Okay, I got one. So streetlights, typically we finance those through certificates of participation. How do these new agreements that are being brought forward affect the financing model that we've used for streetlights, if at all?
I don't believe they do. The attachment rights are for existing streetlights, not new streetlights. And so how would we repay or take the money from the agreements that we're contracting for and move that into the general fund or into the broadband enterprise fund is the question. We are not obligating any changes to the pole. If we ask Verizon or Mobility to remove their equipment for us to do maintenance, we can do that or replacement. In all of these cases, a new pole is being installed as part of the project to replace an existing pole, and that is all funded by the carrier.
And does that change anything about the way we finance, though? The, you know, if we paid for that pole with our lease financing, but that's being taken out and replaced, how does that change what we owe on those, if at all?
I don't think it would change anything on our obligation to repay the debt, but I'd have to defer to the Finance Department if it actually has any material impact on our bond.
Are we using any of the revenue from these rental agreements to pay back the certificates of participation earlier than we otherwise would?
I think that's possible, but we are not right now.
Okay. I'd like to know more about that. Thank you.
I'll follow up with you, council. Thank you.
Kristy Icorn, Mobility, 7824 Sycamore Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have with regards to our agreement. We're, I'm here representing Mobility and I'm very fortunate that there was another carrier that came through a few months ago and paved the way for us. I'm very excited about this kind of technology, small cell technology. Mobility is an infrastructure provider. They are not a carrier. And so we are helping to build the wireless network that's going to help increase both the capacity and the coverage for both businesses and residents here in Lincoln. Are there any questions?
I don't think there are. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? All right, seeing none, please call the next item.
All right, next is item 16, change of Zone 16045. Application of EDU LLC for a change from B4 Business District to B4 Business District PUD for a planned unit development district designation of said property and for a development plan which proposes modifications to the zoning ordinance, land subdivision ordinance, and design standards to foster an urban mixed-use area, including office, residential, retail, and other commercial activities on property generally bounded by O Street on the north, Antelope Creek on the east, K Street on the south, and Antelope Valley Parkway on the west.
Good evening. My name's Kent Seacrest, representing EDO LLC, whose principals are Speedway Motors and NellNet. This is dealing with the Telegraph District. And what we are bringing forth today is a planned unit development so that we can get the image and the marketing and the branding of this area to go forward. We are not adjusting land use in any way. This is primarily signage that we want to talk to you today about. And we have a motion to amend. This is adding two more signs that we thought, both Ed Zimmer and the Planning Department and I thought we could do as a mural and not need a building, a sign permit, but there was a different thought process in building and safety. So rather than disagree, it was just easier to ask that we bring these two signs in. So the motion to amend is really a substitution, but the substitution, which I'll point out here in a moment to you, has to do with two signs. This is the physical area of the planned unit development that she advertised and we are proposing. The bulk of this, again, is controlled by EDO, but not all of it. These are the images that we are starting to introduce to the area. This is the graphic package that will be part of the planned unit development. We are introducing what I call pedestrian signs that are seen not for by cars, but by people, just purely walking the streets. So this will allow these smaller pedestrian signs hang underneath the canopies of the area. We also are introducing street markers. These are images, sometimes the markers are tall and thin and other times they hanging off the building to indicate you are in the Telegraph District as we go forward. We also have introducing two larger type signage that in a shopping center you would see them, but these, we don't, are not a shopping center, but they're comparable. The one on the left would be advertising time, temperature, public events going on in the area, as well as the graphics for the businesses in the area. So not everybody has to go out and get an electronic sign. We want to consolidate that. The other one is on two locations where you will actually be able to drive underneath these signs to indicate you're in the Telegraph District. These are the four locations of those two different types of signs. The more purple symbol are the ones you drive through and the ones that have the electronic message are the more blue signs on the north and south end of this map. This is also permitting this sign to go forward. This is right now legal but non-conforming. We want it to be legal at all times to indicate that you are at the Telegraph. This is that iconic billboard that's been in Lincoln's vocabulary for a long time, but now we want to just call it a Telegraph District area. This is the before. This is one of the two buildings that is the substitute motion to amend that we're going to show you what we're trying to do here. This is trying to show you again that we are putting in, we thought the bottom part of this was a mural and we did not need a sign permit, but that's the difference of opinion. So this is going to make it clear that the mural or the bottom part of this sign can go forward. The top part, the NellNet part is always, we already have a building permit for that. This is also another area of the building, right across the street, which we call the 333 Building. And you can see, again, we are adding, it's called a kinetic sign. It'll flutter. The Telegraph logo or the telephone logo will flutter in the wind. And that, again, we thought was a mural, but now we want to make clear it is a sign. We also are prohibiting certain types of sign in this area. These type of signs are allowed in the B4 area, but in the future, in our area, we'd say, "Please don't put these type of signs here. That's not the image we want to create." So signs that rotate, signs that go back and forth, this type of backlit sign, again, is one of these signs that we're not going forward with. But we also don't want these type of signs, and these are signs that are not allowed in the Haymarket area. But if you notice, these are backlit, but they're individual letters. So these type of signs would be permitted to go forward. I also, Robert Norris is here, who has been our sign ordinance expert. He's worked real hard with us. And Tim Gergen is also here. We are also amending the design standards and we're allowing them to go forward. They're based on the downtown design standards, but in some instances, we're requiring brick and not other hard surface materials because we think brick is the flavor in that area. We're also requiring major remodeling to go through the Urban Design Committee so that we know that it's done in a tasteful way. And they're just a series of improvements such as that we're going forward with. We have taken this through the Urban Design Committee. They were all thumbs up on what we were recommending. We had a neighborhood meeting. Carl was there and we had about 30 people. And again, we heard no opposition with our images and proposals. Planning Commission was unanimous in their recommendation of approval. And again, I just want to thank Bob Norris and Tim Gergen, Wynne Yermsstedt, Tim C., and especially Ed Zimmer for all his hard work in trying to get this image and help us go forward. And with that, our team would be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Jane.
Kent, with some of the streetscape markers along the roadway, are they going to be lighted, require electrical? And then if so, who is responsible for that utility bill?
The private sector.
Private sector.
Yeah, there's no out-of-pocket requirement for city expenditures. All our branding, all our signage would be, you know, funded by the private sector. We also have a pedestrian package where we're allowing not only the traditional pedestrian lighting, but allow pedestrian lighting to come off of buildings, off of docks, so that we can really make this a very safe feeling area. So we will have a lighting bill, but you know, the beauty of LED lighting is such that we think it's one of the best investments there is.
And going forward, all the maintenance of all these structures will be?
Private sector.
Private sector. Okay. Thank you. Carl?
Yes, thank you. The branding of the district looks incredible. The signs are really striking and historically represent what, what used to be and a new form will be. So a temporary sign that Mickey would put up there would show if you're closing off a street, something's happening. Is that something that is allowed?
We're only talking private sector signs. The city would have all their rights to do whatever they need to do to warn people. They can put up traffic lights that are permanent or temporary. You know, those are, we're talking the private sector rights here within this geographical area.
All right. No problem with that. Okay.
John?
Speaking of public signs, I know some neighborhoods have asked about having more unique signs for just the street name, whether it be P Street, Woodsdale, or whatever. Did I see that you had some of your own signs that would mark the various streets within the area? And I'm not objecting, I'm just kind of asking because I think other groups would be very interested.
I know we talked about, even on street signs, at the far end of a green sign to put the little telephone logo, but I don't think we actually ended up proposing that at the end. So the street signs would be green, just like you see all around Lincoln. And as far as the names of the streets, we will not be changing those. We still have N Street, M Street, 21st Street. We think that would be confusing to the public if we tried to rename our streets. We are the downtown. We're just the newest mixed-use part of the downtown.
And with that one sign, with regarding Farmer's Market, are you going to run it from Haymarket down to 21st?
No. We've, what we've seen, though, is the millennials like to do new types of retailing. And I don't know what will be. We've got docks and in certain markets, the trucks literally back up and you can walk through on the docks and walk into the trucks and see displays of products. So whatever you want to call that, we see that type of new retailing. And so our buildings, a lot of them will have docks. And on certain nights, I think you will see people to bring their displays without having to put the tents up. They just literally, you can walk into the truck and see the products and walk back out as part of the, of the new marketing ideas.
Kent, where's this sign going to be?
That's on, what we call the warehouse building that's there today. That's the...
Is this replacing the ALO sign then, or is it?
Well, eventually, yes. I mean, we, ALO needs to keep it there for a little while because we got a lot of marketing for them to do, but that is the ALO sign. Before that, it was LTNT or Windstream.
Right. I just wanted to confirm it wasn't an additional big rooftop sign.
It's just the big old sign that you've seen. And it's ALO today.
And then again, just to clarify, the substitute that you brought us today...
And then again, just to clarify, the substitute that you brought us today, the only way it's different is the clarifications on the 401 Building and the 333 Building, that those things that you thought were murals are now defined as signs? Is that correct?
Yes.
Are there any other changes?
It's this sign and then it's, that's the other sign. That's the bottom part of the signs that flutter. We thought those were murals, but we still think they're murals. But we'll call them sign for the PUD purposes.
But that's it with the motion to amend?
That's it, that's all we've done. Otherwise, it's identical.
I actually had one more question about parking. The proposed removal of existing parking requirements in the Telegraph District, making it consistent with the majority of downtown. That's mentioned in the staff report. Are there practical implications of this request that we should know about, that we have not yet known about in previous presentations?
Well, legally, what's in front of you today, we don't address parking. Several weeks ago, when you updated the B4 zoning ordinance, you removed the parking requirements, not only in South Haymarket, but in this area as well. But your question's a practical one. We in the private sector, how do we want to say it? The first three questions we get asked by any tenant is where do I park? Where do I park and where do I park? Or where do my customers park? And so we have been doing meticulous mapping for each of our proposed projects and showing the city and ourselves that we will be meeting the parking standards of the private sector. And we will be adding as part of our streetscape, a lot of angle parking to help add parking on the street side as well as off-street parking.
So no changes with parking since we've last seen you? Okay, we've seen you a lot with this project, so just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? See Ed Zimmer coming forward.
Ed Zimmer, Planning Department. I thought since Kent had used my name, I should make clear that he was not using it in vain. We had a concept that those two kinetic sculptural mural-like elements, which do not have specific commercial content, they connect to the whole district, would be acceptable. This makes it clear that they are and they've been discussed. And I think you've probably seen them in the redevelopment agreements that had come through on Phase One. So we could call them other things. But basically, they're accompanied by a picture. What would be permitted is what's in the picture. That's very specific.
Thank you. Any further testimony on this project? Please call the next item.
All right, next is item 17, approving a contract between the city and Lincoln Haymarket Development Corporation to conduct and regulate a Saturday public market in the Haymarket area, 7th Street from P to Q Street, P Street from 7th to 8th Street, Q Street from 7th to Canopy, and Canopy from P to Q from May 6th through October 14th, 2017, and on 8th Street from P to Q from May 6th through August 26th, 2017.
Hello, Linda Hubka, Haymarket Farmer's Market. I guess the good news in sounding like a broken record is that things seem to be running pretty well. We're here for our 32nd market, looking to use the same streets and sidewalks on Canopy and 7th and P and Q, as Teresa said here. 8th Street, we only want to use until the 26th when Husker football starts. Same partners, same players. It'll be my 17th year. Jeff Cunningham, the business manager, his 17th year. Can I answer any questions?
Carl?
Thank you for what you do for the community. I just, I was looking at this, I thought, this is almost six months. You know, this is, this is a big part of Lincoln that you, you know, provide this activity every weekend for virtually half the year. So thank you. I mean, it's a great, great thing that you do. So we recently had some issues with safety.
Yes.
And some temporary fixes were made, thanks to Public Works for doing that. And there are going to be some more permanent fixes made. And Mickey, maybe you could help us know, is that happening this year? Or I think it's next year? Okay, so, and I don't know what our timing is on that and how that will be, that construction will be done in relation to the Farmer's Market. But yeah, if you could come forward and maybe this is a good time to have that conversation to make sure that we're on the same page for next year.
You bet. So Mickey Esposito, Director of Public Works and Utilities. We have a large resurfacing project planned in 2018 and it will begin as soon as the weather clears. So we'll be coordinating very specifically with you on those event dates and when to be out of the way and when to be in the way. But yes, that's a big project for 2018. And it will be coordinated with the Farmer's Market.
And these dates are pretty consistent, aren't they? They start the first weekend in May and go through whatever the weekend, second weekend in October?
24 markets, whatever that takes, yeah.
And our work will be structured through the week.
Great, okay, terrific, thank you.
Wow, that's awesome. We really appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for all you do. Interesting to be here and listen, thank you.
It is. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? All right, Teresa, please take us-
All right, that concludes our public hearing. We can go into the voting session. Public hearing resolutions. Item 11 is Report of Claims Against the City for March 1st through the 15th, 2017, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Carl, discussion? Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 12 is amending the fiscal year 1622 Capital Improvement Program, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Carl, discussion?
Well, we've seen, we learned today and in briefings prior to this, that this project is something that was already in the works. There were a lot of different options that were considered, many of them much more costly. And they found a way to get this done in millions of dollars more cheaply. And we hope that they, the police department's studies prove that this location will be viable for them with the addition of to the site that they've identified as a place for their new garage maintenance and repair facility, and I intend to support it. Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 13 is the transfer of appropriations from future labor settlements to roadway and bridge rehab, introduced by Lamb.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Trent, discussion? John?
Well, I have, this is a great project and all. I've, as was discussed somewhat during the hearing, I have concerns about taking this particular amount of money and putting it to this use. I really feel it should go to the police and firefighters pension plan. And so for that reason, although I don't object to improving 84th and Havilock, I'm going to oppose this.
Jane?
I am actually going to support this proposal. As a county commissioner, this has been in the works and has been talked about. I think it's important to recognize that there are a number of major events at the event center. This is something that has been needed for years and trying to struggle and find the funding source to get this to completion has been critical, not only for the existing events, because I think that's one of the biggest complaints about any of the events there. They just cannot move the traffic through. And that's a frustration of those who attend and participate. And getting this done, I can imagine the relief and the welcome relief for those that do want to attend and would have, would attend if they could get out of the parking area quicker. So this is a wonderful opportunity to hopefully get more people to come out to the events so they spend more money, so the city of Lincoln will get certainly some more tax dollars that way. But more importantly, I think it'll really be an opportunity for us to compete for national shows and other events and bring in substantial revenue that will hopefully pay for itself. I did struggle because I thought when the initial proposal came out, it just made sense to put it back into the pension fund. But I think this is something that will really assist in generating revenue that will benefit many, many of our departments in the future. So I will support it.
Roy, then Carl?
I think this is, first, I thought it was a choice between good and better. And I realized that it's a choi, it's a choice right now between saying yes, I support this and no, I don't. Because the better option, in my opinion, was removed from our agenda for consideration to actually put this money in the police-fire pension fund. I do agree that this does belong in the police-fire pension fund. It is the better choice for the long run. Because by not, by keeping that hole open in the police-fire pension fund and not doing everything we can to fill it, we put future city budgets at risk. So I won't support this.
Carl?
This is difficult. It's, I guess it's one of those good problems when you've got money to spend and important places for it to go to. But it's difficult. It's difficult to make this choice because there are, there are these competing needs. And this is something we deal with all the time. And where's the best place? We've worked with John's leadership a lot in trying to address, and Trent and the committee, they worked on things with the police and fire pension to address issues there. And we're in a lot better shape than we were before. But still, every dime we can put in there helps for the future. So no doubt, there's a need there. Fire apparatus, huge needs there. Probably told this before, but I've got a firefighter in Northwest Lincoln who tells me he drives his truck slow because he's afraid of what would happen if he goes too fast. That's a problem. And I think we need to budget for that replacement of fire apparatus to make sure that that's addressed. But the issue that's brought before us today, and it's an immediate need. It's something that needs to happen now. I've been out to the county fair. And when shows are over and you leave, it's not good. And that discourages people from going and participating. And that's not what we want to see. So I will support this resolution.
Cindy?
Thank you. I too believe that the police and fire pension represents an investment in our future. But I think this project also represents a strong investment with an immediate payback in the form of economic benefit to not only the event center in the city, but even in the form of people being able to get more easily back into the city, not leaving town as quickly. And I know that there are huge safety issues. I've driven out to the event center during many events over the course of the last several years, including the super fair. And the conditions out there do get somewhat alarming, especially when folks are turning with trailers. And the event center, just by the nature of what it is out there, invites a lot of participants with livestock. And so I, you know, when children and everyone travels as a family, I think this will be a great economic benefit. And I'm glad that it was, it would be able to be moved up to 2019 completion, which would be ahead of the high school nationals. And so, yeah, I appreciate this project very much.
Trent?
Sometimes the need just matches up right with the time. And I think that's kind of what's happening with the Lancaster Event Center. We do have needs with our pension, we know that. We will continue to have to address that for the next 30 years. I think that's more of a long-term strategic budgeting problem that requires not one-time money. So I think we need to be cognizant of that moving in the future. Fire apparatus, we absolutely need a plan for replacing those apparatus that doesn't necessarily include one-time money, that is sustainable in the budget in the long term. I view this as one-time money. I think the money that we have fits the need. It goes to something that is really only going to expand with Lancaster Event Center. I think we'll see traffic coming in there from 84th and 98th Street sometime in the future as that develops. I don't think they're done building that out. It's going to be something that we're going to utilize as a community resources, a resource. This is a million dollars that is well-spent in beefing up that area. And we're probably going to see additional Public Works requests from them in the future as we develop along 84th Street and out to 98th Street. So I'm going to support this. Still going to look for ways to keep that police and fire pension in front of mind. But right now, this is a need we need to fix.
And I'll just close by saying that yes, there were a number of different items that were discussed as potential beneficiaries of this one-time savings. And while I did support, express support for fire apparatus because we do have such an urgent need and pressing public safety need there, you know, there wasn't enough support for that. And this is still another good and important project. And rather than vote against that, I want to support getting to where the majority are coming down on this. And that's to try and promote economic development and some safety improvements out at that intersection. Please call the roll.
Christensen?
No.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
No.
Motion carried, four to two. Five to two. Item 14, Cop Plan Conformance 17003, the amendment to the West O redevelopment plan to add the Nature's Variety Redevelopment Project, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Roy, discussion? Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Public hearing ordinances, second reading are items 15 through 17. Ordinances, third reading, item 18, Cop Plan Conformance 17002, declaring approximately 1,200 square feet of property generally located at 2201 South 17th Street as surplus property, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Jane, discussion? Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 19 is the purchase agreement between the city and Rashid Bedir and Media Khan for the sale of city-owned property at 623 South 19th Street, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Jane, discussion? Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 20 is amending Chapter 3.06 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the formulation and submittal of the biennial budget by amending Sections 3.06.020. To change the date by which the mayor's recommended biennial budget must be submitted to the city council to June 15th and repealing Section 3.06.020 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as his or two existing, introduced by Gayler Baird.
So moved. Second. Did you want to move it?
Moved by Trent and seconded by Roy, discussion?
Thank you, Larian.
Well, I'm going to thank the coun, oh, Cindy, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't see your hand raised, sorry.
Yeah. I think this is a good start. We had a, of course, a rather contentious budget this past year. And as a result of that, I introduced a proposed charter amendment that had a date change in it for submission of the mayor's budget, feeling like we needed more time. This isn't as much time as I asked for, but I think it's a good start. And I appreciate Councilwoman Larian Baird, Gayler Baird for bringing this forward. I also appreciate the input from the other members of this council. I think that this is, the ordinance part is binding. And although the resolution, which we'll take up also, is not binding, I trust that the administration, being a part of the solution and a part of the compromise that we worked through, will- being allowed to have input into it and input that was, I think, as far as bringing forward the ordinance after the resolution was prepared, I appreciate recognizing my concerns in that area and this being brought forward.
And I would just add that I think this is a victory for all seven of us. There were a lot of concerns that were expressed over the course of the last year about how we influence the budget. And in listening to those concerns and in discussing with the administration, with county staff, with city staff, and amongst ourselves, I believe that all of that discussion and the time that we took to process how to make this better has led to this. I would give Cindy a lot of credit for helping to determine that June 15th date and to all of the colleagues who provided feedback on, you know, what would make a better process for us in terms of shaping and influencing the budget in meaningful ways and having, you know, input in the off-years too, so that we're both shaping the budget annually and also staying more informed and we're more prepared to tackle the biennial budget once it's proposed by the mayor. I know, Trent, you had expressed a lot of concerns about making sure that we, that we were having those discussions in the, in the off-budget year. And, and that's a big piece of, of the resolution, establishing the timeline for, for preparation and approval of the city's budget. So, again, I, I think this is a victory for all seven of us and ultimately for the city and for citizens. Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 21, a resolution establishing the timeline for the preparation and approval of the city's biennial budget, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trent, seconded by Roy. Discussion. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 22, Cop Plan Conformance 16010, declaring approximately 4,525 square feet of property generally located adjacent to 710 Hill Street in Standing Bear Park as surplus property, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trent, seconded by Roy. Discussion. Cindy.
Thank you. So, I ask the question I always ask when we're declaring something surplus property that involves a park and there's no encumbrances on this. I was glad to hear that because I didn't want to try and replace what is going to be essentially a driveway. So, I'm very supportive of this project.
All right. Yes, and this will help Lincoln Public Schools. Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 23 is the Property Purchase and Sale Agreement for the sale of approximately 4,123.35 square feet in the southeast corner of Standing Bear Park to Lincoln Public Schools, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 25 is the Development and Conditional Zoning Agreement with New Covenant Community Church, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion. Well, we learned last week during the public hearing that this is going to allow a church to sell land that it doesn't actually want to keep and doesn't need, and the land will be utilized for a higher and denser purpose, primarily residential, and that should help increase housing stock in our community, which, as we know, is, is a good thing right now. Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 26, Change of Zone 16042, application of Emily LLC for a change from R2 Residential to B3 Commercial at 3255 A Street, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Discussion. Well, this change of zone will allow the applicant to repurpose an existing building that used to be a dental office and clinic to create a new neighborhood restaurant that has support from the neighborhood. Should be, should be good. Look forward to seeing what comes of it. Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 27 is the Related Development and Conditional Zoning Agreement with Emily LLC, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 28 is Annexation 17002, annexing approximately 61.91 acres of property at South 90th and A Street, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 29 is Change of Zone 17002. This is an application of the Herbert's for a change from AG Agricultural to R3 Residential and from AG Agricultural to R1 at South 90th and A Street, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Discussion. Just to recap, these are related requests for the annexation and change of zone. The applicant's going to be developing almost 62 acres and rezoning the land to allow for the building of about 154 single-family lots, again, increasing the future housing stock of Lincoln. Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 30 is the Conditional Annexation and Zoning Agreement for the Herbert's at South 90th and A Street, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Our resolutions on first reading are Items 31 through 33. Our ordinances on first reading are Items 34 through 38. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time.
Now, she wants to talk first, she can. You want to talk first, baby?
Nope.
Okay. Because I'm trying to be like we're on the bus. It has to be safe, all this stuff with us. Let's see if I can handle it. Cindy, the bus sucks. All right, guys. Don't start yet. I'm not up here yet.
Well, as you come up, Mrs. Terry Pope Gonzalez.
You can call me. That's fine, honey, that's fine.
Would you please refrain from using swear words at this time?
Yeah, yeah, listen. I, I, I'm going to do something for you guys, okay? Cindy, since you came to check on my husband, you get this, okay? Don't, no, if, have you ever been a referee? Okay, have you ever played soccer? Can you catch?
Don't throw. Please don't throw anything at the council members.
I have children. I've always been a referee. Okay, now, listen. If you throw this, means I've cussed, okay? Wait, 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 wait. Because this one right here, he needs this for your vote. We need a receipt, okay? Now, you, I've started. Here's my filter. Okay. All right. I'm actually kind of funny when I'm not mad, okay? Oh, we got to do this. Here, here, ready? Make this thing work. Somebody. The worker? I don't see it. Make it work. Do you have any idea what that word is? We're not going to talk about it yet. I really did bring you a sympathy card, okay? Grief is really hard. Can you hand that to her? Trent, I asked my brothers to get you a dog, because that's what he called you during the Trump thing. They got you a cat. I don't know if it's a male thing, but cats got it. And I asked them to get you food. I don't have a clue what this is. My son will be 40 years old, May 30th, 1977. I have not seen him since 2006. I have not heard from him in three years. Now, I'm going to read something to you from the comics. Oh, no, he's still breathing, and thank God he is. This is Lincoln Journal Star, Sunday, August 16th, 2015. I always read the comics. I like Bizzario. Snow White. It's Snow White and the Seven Deadly Sins. Good news, guys. Your cousins, angry, lazy, greedy, hungry, vanity, envy and frisky are coming to visit. Now, whatever the seven, I don't remember the seven dwarfs. What were they? Dopey and I don't, I'm not feeling well, so I don't know. Sergeant Teresa Herza. All right, I'm going to read this to you. This is Lincoln Journal Star, September 11th, 2014. Police seek help finding trailer. Item stolen after death. Phew, we just had a suicide, Jeff, so this doesn't have anything to do with you. Lead from Ralston area, most promising so far. A sergeant, Teresa, badge number 787. A sergeant and 25-year-old, no, 25-year veteran of the Lincoln Police Force. Teresa Herza has seen what thieves do to stuff they can't sell. They destroy it or trash it. This spring, someone stole a trailer, holding baby books, family photos, and old hockey trophies and sticks that belonged to her son, Kobe, who hung himself in May in the basement of their home. Now, do you think she gives a tinkers-whatever about your pension? I don't know if that was her only child. I'm going to read you something else. Now, my people are getting really pissed off right now, aren't they? Because I am the ice queen. The ice queen never has tears. This is for Trent. Trent, I don't have a clue what this is, but it says Kellogg's, okay? So, there you go. Okay. I can't see you, so please don't move. And, Christensen, can I see? No, I can't. I don't have a clue who you were today. All right, are you guys just ready? December 31st, 2013. Dear Terry Ray, what a wide end this year. Here is the memorial folder from your daddy's services. I sent to Althea and Alitha Ann. Here are some pictures that Larry and Kathy gave me. Enjoy. Have a better new year of 2014. Love, Aunt Dormery. 2015, Debbie Keible Crawford blew her brains out with her service weapon. Google her name. Debbie Keible Crawford. Now, why would she do that? She was a paramedic for 30 years. Her husband was getting ready to retire from the Denver Police Department. Do I get a little bit more time or not? Yes or no? 15 seconds. Okay. We must stand united. I am asking all of you to remain engaged in our government's proposals at both the local and national to level. This is how real working men talk. I didn't do it. Am I done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's fine. Are we done? So, Jeff, I'm so sorry for your grief.
Would anyone else like to address the council during an open mic?
I have to stand here a minute, okay? I can see you guys.
Madam Chair, seeing no one else wishing to testify, I'd move for adjournment.
Seconded by Jane. Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We are adjourned.